Good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. I guess before we get started, I should let everyone know that the Board met at an executive session tonight, December 14th, 2017, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations. Oh, okay. Tonight, we will have a work session, which will be followed by a regularly-scheduled action meeting. This work session is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board. The Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Thank you.
Do we have a video update for the action meeting? And that includes then the pledge of the flag? Right. Okay. It's really the President's choice. You want to do it now and cut it? Do it now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, we do have one work session topic. It's in regard to the air conditioning bid results. And this evening, we'll have Mr. Scrocky and Mr. Kennedy provide some overview via PowerPoint. And I believe there'll be an opportunity also for the public to have -- provide comment.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Mr. Kennedy and I are back again. We were here Monday night and presented information regarding the elementary air conditioning projects. Monday night, we talked about the scope of the project. We talked about the background. We talked about the bidding process, in particular, bid phase or bid part number one and bid part number two. Tonight, we're going to focus a little bit more on bid phase two, what's before the Board later this evening at the action meeting with respect to the three bids for the elementary school project. So, we're going to focus on that and talk about the cost estimates for those three projects, instead of reviewing all the history as we did in detail on Monday night. So, we'll review the timeline, the remaining timeline, again, tonight. We'll talk about the financial impact, the cost estimates, the bid results that are before you this evening, and then also discuss a little bit about some components of what an architectural RFP looks like in a feasibility study. So, again, we're talking about bid number two. Bid number one was conducted last year, and the bids were rejected. There was no electrical bid received. So, we regrouped and re-advertise and rebid again this fall. So, we're going to talk about bid number two this evening. So, the remaining project timeline from this point forward, as we mentioned Monday evening, the bids were received in early November. The bids are good for 60 days. So, absent a special meeting between now and early January, the Board would need to take action on the bids tonight. And that could be awarding the bids, that could be rejecting the bids, or that could be scheduling another meeting for consideration. For the sake of argument, let's assume that the Board does take action and awards one or more of the bids this evening. The remaining process and timeline for the project would occur like this. On December 18th, our architect would issue a notice to proceed, an NTP, to the low bidders. On January 19th, that would be the deadline for the three contractors, the three prime contractors, for each of the three schools to submit shop drawings to the architect. And May 18th, 2018, would be the deadline for the HVAC equipment delivery. Construction would start June 18th. Substantial completion would be in August, and final completion would be in September of 2018. So, even though we conducted this bid earlier than last year at this time, we're actually several months ahead of last year's process, and the timeline is still pretty tight. The important part is having that lead time to order and receive the equipment. So, I'd like to review the information about the financial impact. We mentioned on Monday that the project would be funded from capital reserve proceeds. And we have about $12.9 million in cash between our capital reserve fund and our construction fund proceeds. Capital reserve fund is a separate fund the school district maintains. It's not a part of our general fund, separate and distinct. The capital reserve fund is for one of two things. It's for infrastructure upgrades, capital improvements to buildings and our facilities, or for the purchase of school buses. And that is dictated by Pennsylvania's School Code. Also, I don't know if I mentioned Monday night, but once money is in the capital reserve fund, it can't be transferred back to the general fund. So, I talked about the methodology, how the capital reserve fund gets funded on Monday night. Typically, what has happened in the past is the Board would authorize a transfer from the general fund over to the capital reserve fund from unspent money in any one fiscal year. Typically, it happens at the end of the fiscal year if we know we're going to come in under budget on expenditures. Once that money is transferred to the capital reserve, it can never come back. It cannot be transferred back to the general fund. So, between our bond funds with some renovation projects and the capital reserve fund, we have $12.995 million. Right now, we have roughly $9 million in the pipeline for committed projects. Some of those in projects include the final payments for Montgomery Elementary School, for Hatfield Elementary School, a prior project from Inglewood Elementary School, asbestos abatement, camera upgrades at the elementary schools. So, that leaves a remaining balance that's unallocated for any specific project of a little bit over $4 million. Now, as the bids are presented tonight, if the Board would move forward and award the low-bid contracts for each of the three buildings, that would require an additional $2.9 million. So, the money that we have allocated for this project was roughly $4.6 million. That was the figure that was approved December of 2016 by the Board, when the Board authorized moving forward with working with the architect and developing the bid specifications for the project. So, that $4.5 million figure would be substantially higher now, based on the bids that were received. It would require almost an additional $3 million in order to fund the projects. And then, that would leave roughly $1 million in our capital reserve fund, moving forward. We talked Monday night about some projects that we have on our radar, but we don't have any funds necessarily allocated for those projects. The one we discussed was Nap Elementary School, with potential additional improvements to that facility, as well as field upgrades as part of our master plan that was presented to the Board last year for field upgrades. So, $1 million will be remaining. So, we spent quite a bit of time on Monday night talking about the cost estimates and how they have actually grown over time. The first cost estimate we received for this project from our architect in November 2016 was about $3.7 million. That's the bar on the far left. And this includes soft costs, too. So, this would be contractor costs, plus the cost of the architect, plus a contingency. If the boards -- if the bids were awarded by the Board this evening, including the alternates, the total would be the far-right column, which is $6.9 million. That's not quite the complete picture, because we also spent about $550,000 already this summer for the Oak Park multipurpose room. So, if you throw in that piece, it actually is $7.5 million total. So, the estimates grew from November all the way through September. September was the last estimate that we received. The September estimate was $8 million. Okay. So, now, taking a look at the bid results for bid, what we're calling bid number two. Again, these are for three buildings. The three buildings are Oak Park, Nap, and Gwinor. And these final results are the base bids. We talked Monday also about the base bid and then some of the alternate bids as well. So, Mr. Kennedy can elaborate on the alternates, if you would like. These charts, for now at least, are going to focus on the base bid. The September 19th estimate was about $5.7 million, and the base bids came in slightly higher than $5 million. So, when you look at it from the last estimate from September, it looks pretty good. If you look at it from the original estimate from last November, it looks pretty bad in terms of the way the bids actually came in relative to the estimates. If you include the alternates for each of the three buildings, the 9-19 estimate was almost $7 million, and the low bids came in at 6.2. Again, it's all a matter of perspective, which iteration of the estimate you want to take a look at. From this perspective, again, it looks pretty good. So, let's look at each individual building now. We'll start with Gwinor. This includes alternates. If the Board would consider the low bid this evening, at Gwinor, it would be $2,671,000. I'm sorry. This is the estimate. And the low bid is $2.1 million. So, if the Board would decide to move forward with Gwinor, the low bid, including the alternates, would be $2,113,796. Again, that would be for consideration at tonight's action meeting. Now, the breakdown at Gwinor between the three prime contractors, we have General, we have HVAC, that's Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, basically the mechanical contractor, and Electrical. This is the breakdown. So, and as you would imagine, the largest piece of the puzzle here, since it's a mechanical project, air conditioning project, is the HVAC portion, $1.441 million. And then, smaller amounts for the general construction and the electrical construction. And moving on to Oak Park. Oak Park, low bid with the alternates came in at $1.7 million, and that actually was higher than the September 19th estimate. So, Gwinor was lower than the last estimate. Oak Park was actually a little bit higher. The estimate was roughly $1.6 million. The low bids came in at $1.7 million. And Oak Park has a similar breakdown. The lion's share of that $1.7 million stems from the HVAC portion, and then smaller amounts in General and Electrical. And on the agenda tonight, we do have a breakout with the name of the contractor and the dollar value for each specific alternate and for each specific prime contractor. At Nap, the low bid actually came in less than the September estimate, similar to Gwinor. The low bid was $2.4 million, and the estimate was $2.7. And again, very similar breakdown here. We have the lion's share of Nap is for HVAC, $1.6 million roughly, smaller amounts for General and Electrical. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kennedy. We're going to talk about the architect RFP that the Board authorized at the December 5th reorganization meeting, and talk about some of the components, very briefly, of what would be included in a feasibility study.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we discussed issuing an RFP for Architectural Services. Tonight, I'd like to briefly describe the process and our expected outcomes. The process involves site visits, identifying facility improvements, developing cost estimates, and preparing a final report. The selected architect will bring a small team to our buildings and survey our buildings, our grounds, and our athletic fields. They will also conduct interviews with our building administration, building custodial staff, and district maintenance staff to assess existing conditions and discuss any building concerns. The architect will then use a matrix to recommend improvements. The improvements could be categorized such as life safety, energy efficiency, educational initiatives. It will categorize all the improvements that identify in the surveys. We're also asking the architect to complete an energy analysis of the selected buildings that we're looking at. And finding all these options will be presented in a final report. Each recommendation will be signed a budget estimate. We're going to ask the architect to include the surveys and all their walkthroughs and interviews in that, so we can see how they prioritize and where they got that information from. And finally, we're going to ask the architect to assign a grade or priority to each recommendation, priority one, priority two, priority three, so we can help decide and map out our long-range plan, or at least what we want to do in those selected buildings. So, that's a brief summary of an RFP. Any questions about that?
Have they graded previously, like the architect that we currently have? Do they have a priority list?
I'm not sure. That wasn't the year I've been here.
Okay.
I'm not aware of the last time a feasibility study was done. So, basically, at this point in time, we'd be happy -- we have the slide deck from Monday loaded here also. We'd be happy to go back to any of the information we shared on Monday night, or open the floor up for Board questions or community questions at this point.
What is the recommendation from the administration on this?
In terms of the air conditioning or the --
Yeah.
RFPing for the architect, that kind of thing?
Well, both, actually.
Okay. Clearly, the Board needs to value where the community stands on the condition of the buildings and the things that go along with a particular building. And if the community and via the Board values the air conditioning in the buildings, then, you know, we're charged with trying to find a way to be able to make that work. That's the plan that we embarked on last fall, when we had discussions. So, we proceeded with the process as directed by the Board. If the Board takes a look at this and says that this is not in terms of our priorities, you know, maybe at the same place as was previously discussed, and they would like to go a different direction, then we'll take that direction. In terms of the RFPing process, we talked about that earlier in the month, and we are preparing an RFP for Architectural Services. And it would be our recommendation, as a part of that RFP, that a feasibility study be done, particularly on Nap Elementary, North Penn High School, and actually, this building here ought to have it done also. This building has a lot of significant needs and hasn't been touched. We would not recommend including in that feasibility study buildings that were just recently renovated. It's not worth the time and effort for the architect to go right back up to Hatfield since we just did one. It's been a little while since we've had one.
It's been a while, but I remember a feasibility study.
Right. Definitely.
The other question is, you know, I'm concerned about if they approve this, the closest $7 million. That depletes a lot of our capital reserve.
Correct.
Can't they just, like, break part of it out and, like, do, let's say, Gwinor one year? And then, you know what I mean? That's the biggest, one of the biggest concerns I have. I mean, that could really put us in a bind. And what's the administration have in regards to that, if we do go forward with this?
Well, we'll, again, we'll do at the direction of the Board in terms of whatever it's believed that we ought to be doing. I certainly understand valuing the use of the capital improvement dollars and the drain this would put on that total amount, because it would pull it down pretty significantly. We'd be down, I think presently, the numbers, if we did all three projects, down to about a million left in capital reserve. Now, in the past, we have moved money, unspent money, from budgets into capital reserve. It's too early for me to say now, here in December, what we're going to end up with by the end of June in this present budget. If things go well for us, perhaps we'll be able to be able to move more from unspent money there. We certainly also have other monies in reserve. I mean, there's no doubt about that. We have a fund balance. We could declare even more for a capital reserve, but you have to plan for that, because you can never overspend your budget. So, you have to kind of do some planning if you intend to move more into capital reserve.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Would the depletion of the capital reserve have any effect on our bond rating?
That's a great question, and the answer is no. When bond rating agencies take a look at your overall financial status of a district, they typically don't even look at the capital reserve fund. They're more focused on the general fund, fund balance. And they don't even look at the capital reserve fund. So, that wouldn't have any impact at all.
Can I follow up on that real quick? The act of depleting it down won't impact it, but let's say that in six months, something happens in another school where we would have to take action to repair something that maybe overtaxed the funds. Would the actions there make an impact on the bond? If we had to, would that be lending? Like, what are the actions that would happen if we had to, if we were down to, let's say, a million, and then something for 1.5 came up? What are the steps that we would have to take there?
Well, we would, depending on what the issue was, we perhaps would deplete the remaining balance of the capital reserve fund at that point in time. We do have money in the general fund budgets called budgetary reserve. It's designed for emergencies that might come up during the year, unbudgeted expenses that might come up. We have, that's actually down now to $750,000, which I believe is an all-time low in the 2017-18 budget, $750,000. So, we could use the $1 million from the capital reserve and the $750,000 in budgetary reserve. But I think the fact remains, if there is an emergency, if a boiler would have a complete failure, or if a roof would be compromised and needed to be remediated right away, I mean, we would spend what we needed to spend to get an emergency situation remediated. But in terms of available dollars specifically for capital projects, it's really that $1 million, and then potentially the $750,000. One additional note, too, Mr. Schilling, this might frame one of your questions. Just want to remind the Board that this time around, for bid number two, we bid these as three standalone projects. They're not lumped in together. So, the Board could elect to reject all the bids, award for one school, award for two schools, or award for three schools. That's really your option, because they are standalone projects.
I just have a question about the feasibility study. So, is there a timeline for that? Did I miss what our deadline is? Has that been set?
We are completing the RFP, so we will actually indicate some of those dates in the draft that we share with the Board for your consideration. Probably, once the architect is selected, I would think, Mr. Kennedy, in your experience, maybe three to six months to complete the feasibility study, especially if we're looking at three buildings. It might take a little bit longer, three to six months, maybe a little bit longer.
Okay. Thank you.
The three buildings were Nap, the high school, and Pendale?
No, actually, this facility here, the ESC, the Educational Services Center. And one of the things that we've discussed internally a little bit is about approaching this building with a guaranteed energy savings agreement methodology, where we would use savings from the utilities to help pay for the renovations. So, that's one of the options that we would actually take a look at to fund this particular building. We think there could be some significant savings, especially on the electrical side.
Yeah. Our electric bill for this building is phenomenal. I mean, it's very high. The systems in here are very, very old. They're extremely energy inefficient. We have a lot of failure within the system. We have a lot of difficulty getting parts to be able to fix the heating and ventilation, air conditioning system in here. It's just not good at all. A lot of employees that are suffering, quite frankly, through some difficult, challenging times with the heating system. That's just not where it needs to be, and the energy for it is phenomenal. So, there are some programs out there, if you can experience some energy savings. You pay for the renovations through the savings to the energy area. So, that's what we'd be looking at for this building. But we do need a feasibility study for even anybody to take a look at that. They're going to want to have an expert give them an idea of what the current status is.
John, following up on some of your questions earlier, we had some discussion on Monday. We had some parents here from Nap, and they expressed concern about the general conditions at Nap. You know from Support Services that there's a lot of issues going on at Nap, and we had some parents in the audience express support for actually holding back on the AC project and waiting for the feasibility study to come back in, and maybe taking a look at Nap more comprehensively, instead of just trying to Band-Aid one problem here, one problem there. So, to your point, I think we're all concerned about the level of funds that are in the capital reserve fund. So, if we're going to start picking one project versus another, we did hear some support on Monday for maybe holding on Nap.
And I would just add to that, there's been a late surge. We've made sure that we also received some emails that have been coming in late today as well, with some of those same concerns.
Is there much potential for energy savings with the systems that would be put in? I know that they're heating and cooling systems, correct?
At Nap or here?
No. At Oak Park, at Gwinor, the systems that would be putting in, are they energy efficient?
They are, but you will now, the utility costs will grow up a little bit. You're adding air conditioning to those buildings.
Right. Are they heating and cooling systems? Did I read that they do both, or is it just cooling?
They're both, but they're supplied by the existing boilers in those schools. If you remember the sketch I had, the boiler was still, provides the hot water of those units.
Okay.
We're adding as a compressor in each classroom for the air conditioning.
Are there any other questions from Board members on what is in the packet tonight in the action meeting? In the action meeting, if you page ahead to the action meeting, you'll see each project broken out. You will see the apparent low bidder for each of the projects. Deeper in your packet, you can find all of the bids that were given for it. So, you can kind of get a feel for how much variance there was in the various bids. On the summary in the action agenda, you'll see the apparent low bidders. But there's a summary deeper in your packet that shows all bidders and what their bid prices were that they gave us. You'll see alternates also. And, Mr. Kennedy, if you could, again, just kind of walk the Board through a little bit about the base bid and the alternates, so that everybody is clear during work session on what those aspects are in terms of there being base bids and there also being alternate bids. As he's getting ready for that, you'll see, as was referenced earlier, there's a general construction in the case of Gwinor, for example. Since that one's first on the agenda, that's LJ Paolala Construction Incorporated. There's a base bid, and then there's an alternate, and then a total contract. Then, there's the mechanical prime contractor. That one would be Tri-County is the apparent low bidder in that regard. There's a base bid. There are some, three alternates on that one in its total contract amount. And there's an electrical construction from Electrotech, a base bid, and then three alternates on that one also. So, we talked briefly about this on Monday night, but if you could just summarize again for the Board what we're looking at, if they go with the base bid and the alternates?
Sure.
Question? What is the significance in, on page BA2, item 5D, the air conditioning bids for Gwinor? It has a base bid and alternate two. The others have alternates one, two, and three. So, what happens to alternates one and three?
I think --
He's doing them for free, or?
No. Those didn't, that's in the general contractor. There was no general construction work for those two alternates. Only your Gwinor?
Right. The first one?
First one.
Up there?
Yeah. You can see the alternates only applied to the mechanical contractor and the electrical contractor. There was no general construction work in those alternates.
But there's an alternate GN2 for Gwinor.
Oh, okay.
General construction. $150,264.
All right. Thank you.
So, back to our floor plan. This is similar for all three schools. The blue areas are currently air-conditioned areas. The areas in red are not. The base bid includes air conditioning all of the general classrooms in the base bid. The alternates add, GN1 is air conditioning the technology serving closets. Alternate two is air conditioning the central areas, activity areas in each wing. If you look at the bottom right, that red area, you see the six classrooms. In the middle, there's an activity area in the middle that those classrooms share. Alternate two will air-condition that space. And then, alternate three is the same thing, some interior classrooms, very small rooms, will add air conditioning to those spaces. Same thing for Nap. The one difference in Nap is alternate number four, which provides a new energy management system to the entire building. Currently, it's a combination of pneumatics, some digital controls. It's kind of just patched together. This will provide a complete building control system to schedule our times of our HVAC equipment runs. So, we're recommending that as well. And finally, Oak Park, same thing, the server rooms, common areas. Oak Park, the cafeteria is currently air-conditioned, but that unit is failing. We put a lot of repairs in this fall. We may have to do a little this spring to get through the school year. So, we're recommending to replace an existing air conditioning unit and adding a new one at Oak Park. And we are recommending all of the alternates for these projects, to completely air-condition each building.
How old is the air conditioning that you're talking about at Oak Park that needs to be replaced?
I think cafeteria is at least 20 years old, I believe. Yeah, it's old. It's an older unit.
How about the energy efficiency at Oak Park and Gwinor? So, I know that Nap's a single pane and has some issues, but how do the other two schools measure up?
Those buildings are better. They were renovated in the last 10 or 15 years. So, from an envelope standpoint, they're insulated and tighter. The boiler at Gwinor is old, something we keep our eye on over the next three, five, six years. That may need to be replaced. It won't affect what we put in now, because it's providing the heat to those, these units. But those buildings are a little more energy efficient, much more than Nap.
And what is an estimate on a boiler at Gwinor of that size?
I haven't determined that yet. So, that's part of our, you know, we'll look at that.
Is that something, though, that's typically running six figures?
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
You know, $100,000 to $200,000 probably for that size boiler. The high school is probably double that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board for us?
Does anyone from the public want to get up and speak? Make a comment? Now's your chance. You have to come up to the microphone.
Hi. My name's Michelle Johnston. I'm at 904 Flintlock Drive in Lansdale. After listening and understanding the cost of installing AC in the three remaining elementary schools, I believe it would be fiscally irresponsible to vote for moving forward with the project. This would leave less than $1 million in our capital reserve fund. Mr. Scrocky, I'm probably saying your name wrong, and I apologize, commented on Monday that we typically have three to five million in this fund. So, allowing it to drop significantly below that would have an impact on us as taxpayers. I'm concerned -- I'm concerned how this will affect our bond rating, though we did touch on that today. But if an emergency arises, then we only have $750,000 in the budgetary reserve to combine with that million before affecting our bond rating, I'm under, that's my understanding. So how many days of the school year do we actually see above 90-degree temperatures? And did the decision to move forward with starting school prior to Labor Day impact the decision to go ahead with air conditioning in the three elementary schools? At Monday night's meeting, we talked about repairs desperately needed at NAP, single pane windows, drafty doors, recent $7,800 plumbing repair, and necessary building upgrades. Air conditioning could feasibly be added during these repairs and upgrades. We were told Gwinnor had an older boiler, which Mr. Kennedy did touch on tonight, but nothing pressing for repairs, and Oak Park had no identifiable major concerns. It was also touched on that the high school is in dire need of upgrades with no plans in the works at this time, but has remained on the agenda. My concerns extend past the comfort of air conditioning. While I understand it gets hot and uncomfortable, I myself survived 12 years without air conditioning in schools. We opened windows and we used fans. I would assume there are still some homes in our district without air conditioning as well. Bottom line is that we cannot afford the air conditioning project for all three elementary schools at this time. There are other issues I'd like to see addressed rather than air conditioning. We have a real drug problem in our schools. We need more frequent visits from the drug-sniffing dogs, which there was one there today at the high school, it was announced, so the students knew it was coming. We need to start talking about this in meetings. The fights at the middle school, namely Pendale is where I can speak to, they're too frequent, they create an unsafe learning environment for our children. Consider using the funds to hire additional security guards. The fights on our school buses, namely the first student bus going to Pendale. Boy-girl fistfights on that bus with no attention to the bus driver, no pulling over or correcting students, completely ignored, and I hear it from my children when they come home from school. There are district buses with video capability, but the first student buses do not have that, and when the district buses go out of commission, then they're being replaced with the first student buses. I suggest shelving plans for air conditioning at Oak Park and Gwinnor and moving forward with the necessary repairs and upgrade to NAP, including an AC upgrade at that time. Anything beyond that demonstrates wasteful spending that the taxpayers will certainly pay the price for.
Thank you. Anyone else want to get up and speak?
My name is Alexis Popak, 201 Greenwood Road, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. Dr. Diedrich and I had spoken briefly previously about this. My children attend NAP Elementary, I'm also on the Home and School Board for NAP Elementary. I have been for several years now. We are voicing for several people who have talked to us about it. We feel that just going forward with air conditioning would not be beneficial for NAP. There are a lot of issues there, and air conditioning is not the top priority there. It would be wasteful spending, as the previous speaker mentioned. The windows would not even keep in any air conditioning, they don't even keep the heat in at the moment, they don't keep the outside air outside at the moment. You know, we have lots of leaks in windows, we have signs that just say, watch out, the areas on the floor, because every time it rains, the water comes in through the walls, and we have to watch out for those, you know, we just know that they're there. There's a lot of issues there, they mentioned the plumbing. There's still sometimes, you go in and you smell sewage in the school sometimes. We would really prefer if they really strongly considered the full building renovation. We are willing to wait for air conditioning in the building, though, I mean, the teachers do suffer as it is. I mean, it can get into the mid 90s and upwards on any given day when it's hot outside. So the circulation in the building is not very good at all, even with about, I don't know, some classrooms have like five or six fans going at a single time, and it's still in the mid 90 degrees. But we will wait if we know that all of the issues will get taken care of, because air conditioning is not going to solve all the issues that are at NAP right now. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Megan Smith, I am also a parent at NAP Elementary, I live at 1111 Lansdale Ave. I am part of the Home and School Association as well. I just wanted to echo what Alexis just said. It's, I mean, obviously, air conditioning is very important. I think all of our kids deserve to be in an environment, and staff and teachers as well, where it's comfortable. And it does get humid down here, and it does get humid well after Labor Day, as we just saw this past fall. But like Alexis said, we'd be willing to wait a couple of years just so we could have a full building renovation. It's frustrating for me as a parent, my kids go to North Penn School District, and a lot of people moved to this area so their kids can attend North Penn School District. But I live in an area where, in a radius of three miles, there's elementary schools that have been renovated and they're air-conditioned, and I'm paying the same taxes as these other parents are, and I think we're, all of our kids deserve to be in the same learning environment that is updated and modern and comfortable. And that's all I have to say.
Mrs. Smith, would you mind writing your name and address?
Yeah, I was about to do it right now.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bortniczek, I live at 862 Monticello Place, Lansdale, PA. I have some notes I took while in here, so I've actually have a couple topics, hopefully it won't take long, but more of them are questions. I am a parent at NAP, and I would also recommend, as a taxpayer and a parent, that I would not recommend putting the air conditioning in there now, but rather do a full evaluation and determine what NAP's building needs before we move forward with renovations there. And I'd like to have it looked at as a bigger project before we make the decision to potentially consider AC there. To that point, though, I would like to say we should also keep on the radar the middle schools, because I'm sure those also we should be considering for future renovations related to air conditioning, so that all the schools in the district could have that. And then a couple other questions. So if I look around at NAP and some of the other buildings in the district, there's modular buildings attached to them. They're supposed to be short-term in nature, I'm sure. Do we have a policy outlined for how long we expect those to be used at schools? What's their asset life that's assigned to them? So like, are we at the point where we've already fully depreciated them, but we're using them because we have nowhere else to go? If that's the case, I'd recommend we continue to look at all the schools that have them to see what other renovations need to be done there to make sure that we're, our buildings are up to, you know, our population in the schools. So it's just a note, that's something I think we should keep on the radar. The other thing I think we should consider is, obviously, all the buildings aren't going to be able to be upgraded with air conditioning at the same time. Obviously, there's not enough money in a school district that has, you know, 17, 18 schools in it. So I would just ask that you continue to develop a temperature policy for the school district that says if, you know, a school or a room gets to a certain point, we would consider leaving the children out for the day. So I would ask that you continue to try and progress that. And I guess, standing here and hearing some of what we've heard Monday and today, what are we doing to ensure timely upkeep on our buildings, so we're not at the point where everything needs to be done at the same time, like the high school and the middle schools and the elementary schools? What kind of lists are we keeping on all of these things in the buildings, like boilers and air conditioners? Because to me, that's a concern as a taxpayer of, what are we doing, right? How are we making sure that our kids are in an environment that's the best for them? And then, I won't be able to stay for the second part, but looking through the documents of what you're going to vote on later, I know there's a policy around unexcused absences. I guess I just have a question on if a day is deemed unexcused, is there a way that you could fight it or challenge it? I have a day every year that my child will always be pulled out of school. It's not a religious day, it's not a personal day, it's a day because it's the day I celebrate the death of a child. That's not listed in the policy, but I'm not going to call the school district and say my kid's not coming in today because of that, I'm going to call it a personal family day. So I just want to make sure that as we're voting and thinking of things, that's considered also when you guys look at unexcused absences, because not all parents are going to come out and tell you why they're really pulling their children from school, so that's all I had.
Thank you very much. A lot of good questions.
So Dave Karschner, 753 Newport Lane in Lansdale. I guess I'll start off with a question. Mr. Skrocky, you had mentioned in, I think, the last meeting, when you looked at the middle school pricing, it was cost prohibitive. What was the pricing for the middle school AC per building?
Sure, I can go back to the initial estimate, we have an initial estimate from the architect that goes back to November 2016, and it was broken out, if we look at the same option, we, actually, six options were presented by the architects at that point in time. But if you take a look at the same option for each middle school, I'll just rattle off what they were for each middle school with option number two, the unit ventilator option. At Pembroke, it was $3 million. At Pendale, it was $4.4 million, and at Penfield, it was $3.1 million. And I just want to emphasize now, that was the initial estimate, and as I showed on a couple slides, that those estimates-
Pretty much doubled.
Almost doubled, correct. But the middle school total then, all told, was about $10.5 million based on the November 2016 estimates provided by the architect.
All right, thank you. And the reason that's important is, you know, we're taking it down to 1 million, right? And, you know, we just got through an election, right? We made a lot of promises. And we promised full-day kindergarten, we promised air conditioning, right? That's a platform we ran on. So I ask, when we need to deplete down to $1 million, I got to think capital's going to be involved in full-day kindergarten, right? How are we going to fulfill that promise? On Tuesday night, or I think it was Tuesday night, there was a conversation about, there were some children in the elementary school that just can't get through the day without having air conditioning. Going to be in middle school here very shortly, right? What are we going to do? We're already at $1 million. So, you know, the perception of a lot of us is that this feels really rushed, you just put a new school board out here, and you're already voting to deplete down to $1 million? That's a concern, that's a big concern. And when you look at, you know, some of the things we're doing and the timing of it, you know, it's just something that I, you know, I really was pleased with the question that you asked earlier, can we do this in a phased approach? We saw when we went Big Bang, it was pretty expensive. When you separated it, it actually brought the price down. If you phase it and they start competing even further, you might actually see the price drive down even more. So I would encourage you to really look at phasing this, and also look at, you know, I asked the question, what happens when these kids get to kindergarten, or kindergarten, into middle school? Are we going to be having the same conversation two years from now? And that's a big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No? All right.
We need to wait to start the next part of the meeting until 7:30, so if there is anybody that has anything to say, we have a few minutes to fill here.
Do we adjourn this meeting? Okay, so we're going to adjourn this meeting?
Recommune at 7:30? Okay, we advertised action at 7:30, so we'll recommune at 7:30.
Can the board-
Good evening again. Another quick announcement, the board met an executive session tonight, December 14th, 2017, from 7:15 to 7:30 PM to discuss a matter of personnel. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance again?
Do the whole thing.
Do the whole thing, okay.
Class of 2005 alum and animal conservationist Michael Brown stopped by York Avenue to share his unique career with Julie Alpert's fifth-grade students. Michael spends most of his time in the African country of Uganda, studying giraffes and zebras in the wild. He credits his time at North Penn with starting him on fulfilling his journey.
Coming out of the North Penn High School system and then going on to pursue a bachelor's, I felt really prepared in the sciences and the math.
Montgomery Elementary School has been hard at work on a school-wide unity project led by school counselor Mrs. Sterling. Students and staff read the book Only One You, and each then painted a rock to showcase their uniqueness. These unique rocks will form one large pathway at the school. Later in the month, 120 sixth-grade students gathered to hear Holocaust survivor Sarah Danin Meller recount her experiences from World War II. The presentation tied into the curriculum as the sixth-grade class just finished reading the book Number the Stars by Lois Lowry. There was one awesome welcoming party at Nash Elementary School. Several Pennsylvania state troopers and some special friends greeted students as they entered the building for the school day.
And this is just for us to come out and be able to show the community that we're here every day, working in, working in the environments that you work in, and because we both have our children here, we need people to understand that we're people too. We have children, we have families.
You may remember from September, Gwinnor sixth-grader Emma Hirsch organized a half-day at her school to raise money for students affected by Hurricane Harvey. More than $800 was raised and sent to Houston. As a small token of their appreciation for Emma's efforts, the school sent T-shirts to Emma and her teacher, Mrs. Skioli. Ninth-grade students at Pendale swarmed the community for the annual day of service. Nearly 300 students traveled to 22 community partners to volunteer and give back to the community we know and love. The halls at NAP Elementary School were filled with generations of love and learning at their annual grandparents' day. Mom moms and pop pops participated in games, projects, and discussed the differences and similarities of what school was like back then compared to today. A Gwinnett Square second grader received the best gift when his dad surprised him by returning home from deployment a bit early. Air Force Master Sergeant Jeff Tomzak greeted his son Matt while his classroom was talking about those who serve and protect our country in the armed forces.
That sometimes the best way out of a terrifying situation is just to march forward.
The Thanksgiving break was filled with festivities for the North Penn School District. The second annual Knights of Honor ceremony kicked off the break last Wednesday night as four new community members and educators were inducted with this honor. The 2017 Knights of Honor class includes the late Dr. Barry Chason, Benjamin Weber, the late Carolyn Murphy, and Bonnie Rosen. Congratulations to the four newest inductees. The fun continued on Thanksgiving morning as alumni from both North Penn and Lansdale Catholic took the field in Crawford Stadium for the third annual alumni flag football game. The Crusaders took their third straight victory as they beat the Knights 47 to 38.
Well, we got a lot of rust to break off coming out here. Most of us haven't done much physical activity in a while, so to actually come out here and play with a bunch of your friends, it's a good time.
Reporting for North Penn News, I'm Jake Lowbry.
You guys voted as the winner in the kindergarten through the eighth-grade division of the 2017 101.1 MorfM Christmas Choir Competition sponsored by Shiko is- Bridle Path.
We'd also like to say congratulations to Bridle Path Alma Just Schools Chorus for winning the 101 MorfM Christmas Choir Competition with their performance of This Is My Wish. They were featured on Fox 29 and performed live at the Kimmel Center and the MorfM Studio. Finally, mark your calendars for Tuesday, December 19th, for the North Penn High School Winter Concert. Be sure to attend to listen to the band, chorus, orchestra, and CMT. We hope to see you there. For all these stories and more, log onto youtube.com backslash MPTV.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens Logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board has just decided that being today is the fifth anniversary of the Sandy Hook tragedy. And in honor of those and other tragedies and the losses for families, friends, and students in particular, that we have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so we're going to start off with Audience of Citizens. Would anybody like to come up and make a public comment? No? All right, then I guess we'll move on with the items on our agenda. So recommend approval of the minutes from the November 16, 2017 Action Meeting, the minutes from the December 4, 2017 Reorganization Meeting, and the work session held on December 11, 2017, as circulated.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? In favor of, so we have a motion in favor of, motion by John Schilling, seconded by Ed Diavio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Can everybody that was not at the November 16 meeting approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, they can. Yes, they can. Anyone can vote to approve the minutes as long as they've been satisfied themselves as to their accuracy.
Okay.
You wouldn't get a majority without them. Thank you.
All right. So, motion approved? Okay. All right, it's Committee Reports. Personnel?
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met an executive session on December 6, 2017, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation.
Thank you. Mr. Diavio, Finance?
Finance Committee Report. This is a report from the November 27, 2017 meeting. The monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. The 2018-2019 first-look healthcare rates. Mr. Skroki presented rate information as well as financial impact on North Penn School District. Based on the core medical plan and increased employee contribution of 17% of the core premium, the total medical and prescription expense will be 1.3 million less than the current year. Second item, air conditioning bids. Mr. Skroki reviewed the history of the estimates for the projects and the recent bid results. The bids are good for 60 days from the bid opening date. These projects are not eligible for state reimbursement. And number three, Burckheimer contract for earned income tax collection. Mr. Skroki reviewed the new contract with Burckheimer, which serves as the Montgomery County Earned Income Tax Collector. The commission was reduced from the previous contract from 1.3% to 1.2%, which will save North Penn School District approximately $16,000 per year. Items recommended for the work session and action meeting are the budget transfers, which appear on tonight's agenda. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled to be held on Monday, January 29, 2018, at 6:30 PM here in the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Diavio. Safe Schools? Thank you.
The Safe Schools Committee did not meet in December. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Monday, January 8, beginning at 6:00 PM in the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkowski. Education, Community, and Policy?
I have that one too.
Thank you.
The ECP Committee did not meet this month. Our next committee meeting will be Monday, January 8, beginning at 6:30 PM, immediately following the Safe Schools meeting. Is that the first reading? Yeah. So before the end of the report, listed below is the first reading for new board policy number 9365, bylaws of the board, electronic attendance at meetings per item End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkowski. Support Services?
The Support Service Committee met on November 27, 2017. The committee reviewed the bid results for the air conditioning project at Gwinnor Knapp in Oak Park. The committee recommended further discussion of this topic with a full board at work session, which we just had. And the next Support Service Committee meeting will be held on Monday, January 29, 2018, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. North Monco Technical Career Center?
Thank you. The Joint Operating Committee of the North Monco Technical Career Center met on November 20, 2017. At that meeting, the retirement of Executive Director Mike Lucas was approved. That retirement is effective December 31, 2017. And the JOC also appointed Dr. Charles Amuso as Acting Executive Director, effective January 1, 2018. Dr. Amuso will be serving in the capacity of Acting Director pending search for an Executive Director. The JOC is actively in the process of conducting a search, and I'll be reporting on that at a future meeting. The next meeting of the JOC is scheduled for Monday, December 18, at 7:00 PM. And as the board knows, that meeting is immediately following the holiday celebration that North Monco has every year, which this year is being held in conjunction with the 50th anniversary of the school. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Diavio. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit?
Guess I'm up again.
You're very busy tonight.
I've got an easy one here. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit did not meet in December. The next meeting of the board is on January 24, 2018. End of report.
Thank you again, Mr. Diavio. How about the North Penn Educational Foundation? Anyone? Did we do that last?
I don't think there's a report this month.
Okay, we don't have a report for that this month then. Oh, okay. All right, do we know when the next meeting is?
I am not sure when the next, I can look it up on my calendar.
Okay.
Let's say the first Wednesday in January. Let me take a look.
So that would be, I think, the third?
Normally, we do meet the first Wednesday of the month. It's not on for third, so I'll have to get back to it then.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's Report?
I recommend approval of amended board policies 5110. That's in the category of students, and it's in regard to student attendance. And also, policy 1270, that's in the category of community, and it's regarding Title I, parent-family engagement. That's per item 66, 17A through F.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Comments or questions?
Question? A woman was up earlier tonight about the Personal Family Day. Is that, are we covered in this? The policy lists examples of excused absences as per the code. That's not an exhaustive list. It's school discretion. Yes, the school discretion. I mean, while I understand the issue, the school does need to know why the student is out in order to make a determination as to whether the absence is excused or unexcused. Yeah, they do. As long as the school believes that it's a legitimate reason to be absent, the school can list it as an excused absence. Thank you.
I have a question. Since that's obviously something that's going to happen for her every year, can she just put a note in the file, or is that something that has to be...
I would think you need the excuse to be...
Every year?
Every year, yes.
So, okay. Thank you. All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Do I all approve?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Recommend approval of the resolution authorizing proposed preliminary budget display and advertising per item BA 5, A through B.
So moved.
Mr. Diavio, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Diavio, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Do I have any comments or questions? Okay, does everyone approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend approval of MALLY LLP Financial Audit and the Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year 2016-17, ending June 30, 2017, posted online and on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mrs. Perkowski, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diavio. Any comments or questions? All approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D is action in regard to the air conditioning bids. We do have them listed individually as they were bid individually. So item one would be in regard to the Gwinnor bid results. These are apparent low bidders per item 7217A through E. You can see total contract amount of general construction for LJ Paolella Construction Incorporated, $455,796. The mechanical construction apparent low bidder was Tri-County Mechanical Incorporated, total contract $1,441,800. And the apparent low bidder for electrical construction was Electrotech Company. And the total contract amount there was $216,200. So we wouldn't need action to either accept or reject those bids.
I move that we accept the bids for the Gwinnor Air Conditioning Project per item 7217A through E to include the base bid and the three-listed alternates.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Fusco. Almost forgot your name.
For all this time.
Do we have any comments or questions?
I think like some of the comments that we have received and some of the emails we've received, it's a luxury that we can't afford at the moment. I will be voting no.
Does anyone else have any comments? Question?
I just want to say that this is an issue that we are coming to terms with as a new board, many of us. And I personally believe that there were some commitments made to the community, and that we need to do our best to try to honor what we can at this point in time.
And we can't afford it.
Okay, so I guess the best bet would be to do a roll call?
Okay, this is roll call. There's a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of air conditioning visit at Gwinnor, including alternates per item 72-17A through E. Mr. Diavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoll?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling? Mr. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. Casa?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkowski?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five votes to two votes.
Thank you.
Item two is the Oak Park bid result per item 7317A through F, general construction, Donal Lee Rysinger, with a total contract amount, including the base bid, of $194,789. The apparent low bidder for mechanical construction was Matchline Mechanical LLC, with a total contract amount, base bid and alternates included, of $1,349,150. And the electrical construction apparent low bidder was Electrotech Company, and the total contract amount with the base bid and the alternates, $164,100.
I move that we accept the bids for the Oak Park Air Conditioning Project per item 73-17A through F to include the base bid and alternates 1, 2, and 3 as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Casa? Do we have any questions or comments?
Same comment as last one. We still can't afford it.
I feel the same way as Mrs. Perkowski. I think that this is, you know, we have other more important needs there. And I really believe it's going to become a problem. And for a short period of time, it's huge. I just don't feel comfortable with it. And, you know, I'm coming from a guy who's from a board, the previous boards have done a lot of renovation work, and we will be very careful of how we spend money.
Thank you. And I really believe that I just, because of some other issues that have come up, I just don't feel comfortable with it. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. As with the last vote and mirroring Mr. Fusco's comments, this is something that we are very much aware of the fiscal reality. At the same time, we have to balance our priorities, and at times there are trade-offs, in order to make sure we have a quality district with reasonably equitable expectations to be met in our building standards and what is needed in a 21st-century, state-of-the-art, educational environment. As part of this decision-making process, we've heard from many individuals, both for and against, from very quiet emails to very outspoken families. And I think that on the balance, everyone has made some very good points, and there are competing interests. However, this decision is to make sure that, once and for all, we move forward on doing things right, not simply putting Band-Aids on it and making sure that there's progress with our community schools.
Thank you, Mr. Casa.
Can I, I'd also like, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So also, as a new member, this has been a big struggle for us to make a decision like this as quickly as we have. I am on board with Christian and with what Jonathan have mentioned, in that we need to make sure that the schools are comfortable. External temperature is not the same thing as internal temperature. So even though it may only be 75 or 80 degrees outside, it gets significantly warmer inside. On that token, though, I am very much in line with what Mrs. Perkowski and what Mr. Schilling have said, in that I would like to see a longer, long-term capital improvement plan published, and a longer schedule to show what it is that we're looking for and what the upgrades may be, so that we can plan and have more visibility in the kind of issues or needs that we're going to go. And I can tell you that I am committed to making something like that more visible and even putting it up on the website for public view. So it is not lost on us that we need to be fiscally responsible, and it is tough to go low in our funding. But I was assured a little bit by what Mr. Skroki said, in that we won't take a bond hit. We do have a list, a little bit of flex in some of the areas. So, I'm with you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments or questions? I guess we'll do our roll call.
Okay, roll call. This is for the Oak Park bid results for the air conditioning, including the alternates per item 73-17A through F. Mr. Schilling?
No.
Wait a second. A through F?
A through F. Oak Park?
All right, never mind. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Schilling, that was a no vote, correct? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. Diavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkowski?
No.
Mr. Casa?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-2. Item three is the Knapp bid results per item 7417A through F. The apparent low bidder for general construction is LJ Paolella Construction, and the total amount there for the contract would be $319,260. The apparent low bidder for mechanical construction is Matchline Mechanical LLC. The apparent low bidder there, contract total amounts to $1,574,150. And the apparent low bidder for electrical construction is AJM Electric Incorporated, and the total contract amount would be $483,000.
I move for the rejection of the bids for the Knapp Elementary School Air Conditioning Project per item 74-17A through F, including the base bid and the four alternates. And that motion is consistent with the overwhelming public comment that we've heard at tonight's meeting, the meeting that we held earlier in the week, and the parent comments and staff comments and community member comments that have come in by email since Monday, asking the board to commit to studying the conditions at Knapp more comprehensively with a long-term focus. I'll note that at the previous board meeting, we did authorize an RFP for Architect Services, and part of that RFP will be a comprehensive look at Knapp, and the board will then move forward once those results are received. So the... So, the public comment has been very helpful to the board. We're very much appreciative of it. And my motion is consistent with that comment this evening.
Second.
Seconded from Mr. Schilling. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Thank you for the rewording.
I would just, whatever we can do to expedite that process of the feasibility study, I would like to make sure that that is not combined with the others. Doesn't mean that we can't have it going to the same vendor. However, whatever we can do to expedite that, there's some major concerns brought up by the NAP stakeholders.
One other thing that I'd ask for as part of this motion is perhaps we could refer to the ECP committee, some sort of discussion on a heat protocol at not only NAP Elementary, but also at our four middle, or three middle schools that also don't have air conditioning capability at this point, just to take a look at what we might do on days that are excessively hot in those buildings.
Okay, so we have a motion-
Why don't you do this separately? I mean, I thought there was a protocol in place. I thought they did something.
We have.
That's what I said. I thought there was.
And we can certainly come to ECP and review that, though. It's not a problem.
So, it should be two motions.
I think it's a separate item. I mean, you want, you should bring it up under other business. I mean, yes, is my opinion.
That's fine. Appreciate that. Okay, so we have the motion to reject the bid at NAP Elementary.
Correct. This is a motion to reject the base bid and the alternate. So, a yes vote would indicate you're in agreement with the rejection of the bids. And a no vote would be that you are not in agreement with rejection of the bids. Mr. Warren?
Agree to reject.
Yes, yes. Board secretary is recording that as a yes. Okay. Mr. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. D'Azio?
Yes.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Yes, with comment. That, yes, includes the feasibility and go, relooking at fixing that.
Do we noted, thank you. Mr. Casa?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero, to reject the bids for NAP Elementary School.
Item E is I recommend approval of the Tax Collection Committee Delegate Appointment Resolution per item BA 6.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we add a lip at other company that proposed last time?
Yeah, this is part of the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee. They oversee the collection of the earned income tax throughout Montgomery County for school districts and municipalities. So, when the Berkhimer, earlier, Mr. D'Azio on the Finance Committee report mentioned the Berkhimer contract that was extended. So, part of that extension of the contract included looking, doing an RFP and looking at other companies to collect the earned income tax.
Is that why they brought their fee down?
Absolutely.
I don't like saying.
Absolutely. The Tax Collection Committee decided to extend that contract after looking at the two proposals they received. So, part of that Tax Collection Committee, the item that's before us now, we have a primary representative of the Tax Collection Committee, which is myself. We have a first alternate and a second alternate.
I saw that in the stuff. So, this is the internal, district internal committee that this is about?
No, no, this is the countywide committee. This is a countywide committee.
But the three people are part of the county committee?
Yes. Well, the district has one vote for the Tax Collection Committee. So, I'm the primary individual, but any of our alternates, in this case, Mrs. Stoll would be the primary alternate, and Carol Pitts, the Assistant Director of Business Administration, is the second alternate. So, I typically attend all the meetings. In the past, the alternates have not attended, but any alternate can attend at any time. But we have one vote on that committee to represent North Penn School District.
So, this is not extending Berkhimer?
That was actually done already by the Tax Collection Committee.
Are they the ones that decide?
Yes, the entire committee. And it was unanimous vote after going through that RFP process.
Okay.
Who are our previous alternates, Steve, on this?
Mr. Shapinski was the board president, also the first alternate on the Tax Collection Committee, and Mrs. Pitts was the previous second alternate. And I was the primary. So, the only change is the first alternate, since Mr. Shapinski is no longer on the board, Mrs. Stoll will take Mr. Shapinski's place.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend acceptance of the school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports. That's SWPIS grant in the amount of $9,579.25 for NAP Elementary School per item 69-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
I'm sorry, was that you? Oh, Mr. Schilling?
Do I have a second? Second.
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items listed A through C.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA 9A through E, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
I motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA 10, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes.
The alternative placement prep school, is that like St. Joe's prep school? Or is there a special preparing them for life school as opposed to a, what would you call it?
Just like a private school?
Yeah, you know.
Vocational versus-
Not vocational. No, like a higher scholastic versus a-
I think a traditional prep versus a alternative ed program with short-term placement.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a short-term alternative placement for a student whose student number is listed there that we believe is the appropriate educational program for that child. And let me make some general comments about alternative placements. Generally, those are a result of the determination made by the district that is the best place for the student to receive their education. We have probably, I think if I'm memory's correct, 78 students that are not receiving their education here in North Penn. They are placed in schools outside of North Penn's 18 schools. So, these two students would be placed at the schools listed on here because we cannot meet their needs here at North Penn.
And this particular preparatory school is a school primarily for students with special needs?
Okay, that was the question, not the policy.
Okay. Okay, so-
I have a question also, part of my learning curve. It's part of the alternative placements, what is the timeline for review on that, not only for student benefit, but for cost-benefit analysis of each alternative placement?
Those are generally worked through with counsel. And we work with the, generally the students also have attorneys, and then we work through what is an appropriate length of time. Sometimes there are multi-year agreements, sometimes they're simply for one year, sometimes they're simply to fill out the remainder of the year. So, there's really no hard and fast on that, but it's generally worked out among members of counsel.
And just, thank you. Of those 78, do those include Montgomery County Juvenile Court placements? Are those all?
Yeah, that's a separate category. But of those 78, I think 40, roughly 48 of those are for students that have some significant behavioral challenges that we have difficulty meeting here within the program that we provide within the school district. So, there's some students with some really significant needs, and there's some specialized schools that are better equipped to be able to handle those significant needs.
Thanks for the background.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Scrocky, the finance report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick notes before I give the full treasures report. First off, for the property owners located in North Penn School District, just a reminder that the 2017-18 tax bills are due very, very soon. If the bills remain unpaid by the end of December, the tax collector will submit that information over to the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau for delinquent collection at that point. Also a reminder, we have a board vacancy right now, and applications are due tomorrow, which is Friday, 12:15 by 4:00 PM. Those applications are to be sent to myself as board secretary. Financially, just a couple of quick highlights that we reviewed at our last Finance Committee meeting. For the 2017-18 fiscal year, we have a budgeted $4.5 million deficit, meaning that expenditures will exceed revenues by $4.5 million. However, revenues so far this fiscal year are actually shaping up pretty good, especially with real estate tax collection has been very strong, earned income tax collection has been very strong, as well as the real estate transfer tax has been very strong. There's been a number of large properties that have sold during the course of the year, and our real estate transfer tax in particular will probably exceed our budget amount by over $1 million. Our earned income tax is up about 3.7% from last year's amount. Revenues as a percent of the budget are ahead of last year's pace, and expenditures are actually behind last year's pace as a percent of the budget. Finally, our investment earnings through the end of October are actually 172% higher than last year. That represents a $250,000 increase in our investment earnings over the same period last year. The treasures report for the month of November 2017, our cash receipts for November were $9,135,531.37, while our total disbursements were $15,147,696.47, leaving us with a cash balance in the general fund of $170,940,347.60. And that's roughly a $10 million increase in cash compared to the same period last year. And also, just a note on this treasures report, this will be a topic on our next Finance Committee meeting, just to see if this structure works for the board in terms of the monthly reporting at the action meeting. Any questions on the treasures report or any financial updates?
No. Thank you.
Okay, hearing none, moving on to the sanction and approval of invoices. I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of November 2017 in the amount of $18,459,642.28 per item BA-1, 2.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Next time is budget transfer. Just a piece of information that we are not permitted to do budget transfers until the month of October. The first three months of the fiscal year, you're not permitted to do budget transfers. And what they really are, you're moving money from one budgetary account to another. So, it could be something where a particular item was planned to be spent in supplies, and the purchase ended up being in textbooks, as an example. So, in order to avoid overdrawn accounts, a budget transfer can be made within a particular department. The budget transfers that are on here for tonight are largely due to a transfer of responsibility. There's a different administrator overseeing this one particular federal program, so we transferred from one department to another department. Mr. Casa, a question?
Just for my information, is there a limitation on that? Like, I know sometimes with federal grant management, you've got maybe a 20% cap on those budget transfers. Is there any state policy?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, I recommend approval of the October 2017 budget transfers in the amount of $2,077,569.83 per item BA-1, 3, A through G.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions? No. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Other business? I'd like, do you want me to?
No.
Under other business, we'd like to make a motion. The finance meeting for January is scheduled for January 29th, but we want to have it be a committee of the whole. So, we would like to have all the board members be there, and two members will be out of town on the 29th. So, would it be okay to move it to January 22nd? Does anyone have any objections to that? Want to check your-
January is a tricky month because there's five Mondays in January. Usually, our meeting is on the fourth Monday, but since there's a fifth Monday.
January 22nd.
January 22nd. Does it work for you, Mr. Schilling? You're okay? Mr. Scrocky, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody else? Okay, so, do I need to take a motion on that? Or can I just?
I always think it's a bad, a good idea to have it as a motion and get it in the minutes.
All right, so Ed-
I'll second it.
Okay, Ed seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Six thirty?
Yes. January 22nd.
Correct. And Mr. Scrocky will re-advertise that meeting?
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and then I have a correction to make. I believe last meeting, I misread my notes on who would be appointed to the ECP committee. So, I wanted to make a correction. It will be Mrs. Prokowsky, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Fusco. So, instead of, I had Mr. Casa. So, my mistake. I apologize. So, that is a correction. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do you want a question?
If I may first. Mr. D'Azio, with regard to NAP, you wanted, you had attempted to include the recommendation to have that referred to a committee.
Oh, yeah.
I think that-
Correct.
Did not get picked up in the motion. You may wish to make that motion again at this time.
I will. I think we need to take a vote on, just to clarify for the minutes. We either need to amend the minutes, but I don't think it's really an amendment to the minutes. I think we need to just-
So, I'm just going to make a motion to-
Make a motion to fix the committee structure based on what you just said.
Okay, do I have a second?
No.
Second, Mr. Schilling, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?